Terry's here, Adam's here. We've got Genevieve in. We've got Chris and we've got Mindy. So I think everybody's on and ready. Hello, everybody. Welcome to a brave and confusing new world. I'm glad that you're all here. So having everybody that was attending present, I called to order the special meeting of the Perry City Council for April fifteenth of 2020. Devin, would you please call the roll?
Can everybody hear me? Sorry about that. Genevieve Cutrell?
Here.
Craig Elliott? Mindy Galbavy?
Here.
Adam Grass?
Here.
Christopher Powell?
Here.
Terry Wood?
Here.
Mayor James Hugle?
Here.
All of the count of four except Councilmember Craig Elliott.
Okay, so this being unusual, I have a few special announcements for everybody to help understand the process of this meeting. This, um, this meeting is going to be recorded so that everybody's aware of that. Council, please be aware of your environment. If you're not speaking and you have background noise, please mute yourself until you wish to speak. If you don't have background noise, you're all okay to stay on unmuted. All decisions with a motion under the governor's rules will require a roll call vote, so we won't have any voice votes tonight. Everything will be done by roll call as required. And all guests joining us are currently muted. If you wish to speak during public comment, please use the raise hand icon and the clerk will unmute members of the public who will have the opportunity to address the council for their full three minute time. Everybody understand? Any questions? Okay, so we will move from, uh, well, actually, we have the pledge of allegiance on here. I don't actually have a flag up here, but if everybody would join me, we can say our pledge of allegiance. I'll admit, I pledge allegiance to the flag. In the state of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. We'll move to our first item on the agenda, which is a possible approval of the March fifth, 2020 meeting. Devin, would you please read the minutes of the March fifth regular meeting? Anyone wants to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm looking for my, uh, somewhere I must have misplaced them. My, uh, booth is there somewhere. Go ahead, somebody read it and do it and I'll, uh, I'll find it while you guys are doing that.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading and approve the minutes from the March fifth, 2020 regular meeting.
Genevieve, we can't hear you.
I heard her.
Oh, okay. Did she say second? Okay, so moved by Galbavy, seconded by Cutrell, that we suspend the rules, waive the reading and approve the minutes from the March fifth, 2020 regular meeting. Is there any discussion from council? Hearing no discussion, I will call the roll call vote. Mindy Galbavy?
Yes.
Adam Grass? Did we lose Councilman Grass? Oh, there he is.
Muted.
I don't know why it's muting. Um, I had them unmuted.
Okay, I think that was, I think Adam was singling yes. That's a yes. Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. So that will move us to presentation and approval of the bills. We have presented lists of bills for council to review. We seek your permission to make those payments.
I move that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized.
Second.
Moved by Wood, seconded by Powell, that we approve the bills as presented and that payment be authorized. Is there any discussion or questions on the bills? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Hey, I'm glad we got your audio back. Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Motion carries. That will move us to mayor's report. Uh, so I want to let you guys know that, uh, as we go through this crisis going forward, um, it's my intention now that we've worked this process out to not cancel any more regular meetings. So I expect to have the first regular meeting in May for council if, and also the, um, the next regular meeting for the planning commission. We're going to work to get them set up with Zoom so that they can proceed with their business. As long as the government, governor has her order in place that allows this process, what I intend to do is if we can gather, we'll allow the groups to gather depending on her emergency orders, but we'll give everybody the option to participate remotely by Zoom if they want to. So that everybody can feel safe as long as the governor says that we're allowed to do this. And, uh, those regular meetings will occur going forward. I also want to let council know that I did approve an emergency expenditure with T.H. Eifert related to some of our sewer pumps. That was on March twenty seventh for an amount of eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars to keep the sewer system working. That's really all I've got to report on, but if council has any questions for me, I'd be happy to take those questions and give you an answer.
I have a question.
Councilman, yes?
Um, what are the chances of keeping our six feet apart in the pavilion? At the Veterans Memorial Park, having a council meetings there?
I suppose that's possible, but if someone to participate by Zoom, the clerk wouldn't have access to her computer to be able to set this whole process up for those who wanted to participate remotely.
Okay. That was curious.
It's not a bad idea because the weather's going to be getting nicer and so if we get everybody willing to show up in person, perhaps we can work it out that way.
All right, just an idea. Good to get out.
Appreciate that. It's very good to get out. Anything else? Other questions from council members? Then I will conclude my report. We'll go to the next section of our meeting, which is public comment. It is at this time and at the end of our meeting, uh, we'll do it at the end. We don't have any other business where we typically do it, but we'll, um, we'll have a public comment at the end where members of the public can address the council on any matters that they may wish. If anyone from the public would like to address the council, and I see that Mr. Lambert is indicating, we will be happy to hear from you. For, for those who are, uh, out there, you can also press the, uh, raise hand icon, but, uh, I recognize Mr. Lambert.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Nice to see everybody. Everybody staying safe, but topic at hand is, uh, I'm concerned about whether or not our city government is looking after the wealth, economic welfare in particular of our residents and our businesses. And I don't see anything on this evening's agenda that, uh, speaks to that at all. Uh, I understand that we as a city, or you folks as city government can't fix the issues that we have at hand, but I'm concerned that with the number of businesses that we have that have had to shutter or nearly shutter themselves, uh, the number of residents that have never probably faced unemployment recently, if at all, that, uh, folks are struggling. And I'm just concerned as to whether or not there's anything or any discussion that the council, uh, may have relative to what, uh, the organization may be able to do to help those folks. Recognize they don't, you know, folks don't carry a magic wand, but I would certainly think that we ought to at least try to understand the plight of our residents, uh, and businesses. I read today that, that Chiawasi County has issued, uh, business grants to twenty-three businesses in Chiawasi County. Unfortunately, none of those are Perry, Perry businesses. Alwasso, Duran, Vernon, Corona all have, uh, some economic help being brought forth to some of the businesses to weather the storm. I think we need to ask, I asked the council to consider what may be possible to understand the plight of our residents and businesses. Uh, and I think we need to talk about, or encourage the council to talk about, uh, sending as positive a message as possible. When you go to the city website right now, you see cancel, cancel, cancel and understand the, uh, physical proximity we've talked about. I'm glad to see that we're going to try to utilize Zoom for the business at hand. Uh, things like the, uh, obviously the Easter celebration needed to be canceled, no question about it. Uh, I'm a little displeased that, that at this point in time, the city yard wide sale, or citywide yard sale, I should say, and city cleanup have been, uh, as posted on the website, canceled. I'd encourage the council to consider labeling those as postponed, that they could be held at a future date later on in the summer, assuming that we get back to some degree of normalcy going forward. So, uh, those are my thoughts. I just asked the council and the mayor to consider the plight of our residents and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Your comments are very much appreciated. Would anyone else from the public like to be recognized to speak at this time? Do we have anybody seeking recognition, Devin?
We have Dave that has a hand up.
Let's recognize Dave.
Hello?
Good evening.
Sorry.
Good evening. Uh, in, in response to Larry's comment, uh, my name is Dave Dragoo. I live in Langsberg. Uh, um, I happen to be the director of Looking Glass Community Outreach. We cover Langsberg, Perry, Shastburg and Morris. And, uh, families, we, we do have an emergency fund for families that are having difficulties of one kind or another. And, um, I just wanted to, in regard to Larry's comment, just to let you know that, um, that any families, um, that are in need, they can contact us. Um, we have a virtual office, so we deal remotely most of the time. My phone number and the, the phone number for the office is six, five, one, six, eight, four, six. And, um, so if you know of any families that are in need, um, you can have them get in touch with us. That was all I wanted to say right now. I might have a comment at the end of the meeting.
Thank you, Dave. Your comments are appreciated. Would anyone else from the public like to address the council at this time?
No. Hold on, you just, you just got muted for some reason.
Oh.
There you are.
Am I packed? Sorry about that. These little controls are kind of sensitive, so we'll close the public, first section of public comment and we'll move to, uh, this is a carryover from our last meeting, discussion regarding post-retirement benefits. Uh, council had an opportunity to receive advice from the city's labor attorney regarding, uh, health insurance benefits paid. And we had some discussion about moving that, or what we might do as we, uh, considered that. Does council want to discuss that at this time or do we want to push this one to the first meeting in May?
I, I just soon delay it. I just soon delay it myself. This is Terry. I, I mean, unless it's a time sensitive thing, I delayed another meeting or so.
I agree with that. Terry was gone that meeting, so, um, another week and, and, and we can bring it again?
It doesn't have to be dealt with tonight, and I think the indication from council was that you wanted to form a work group and perhaps give an opportunity for employees to have a voice in the process. So if we're going to design something like that, there's a little time to think about it, decide how you want to put that work group together.
I would be in a group of forming a work group.
You have a suggestion on how to proceed with that, Mindy?
Uh, no, I thought generally you chose who would be on work groups.
I generally try to listen to council and, uh, put the most interested people on there. I, I take it you're interested?
I could do it, yeah.
Okay, well, why don't we appoint you to chair the work group? Are there other council members who would like to be part of the, uh, discussion at this point for the work group?
You're gonna have to do this work by phone like we are now.
I agree.
Maybe that leaves me out. I'm not doing so hot with this.
Mindy, I'll work with you. Mindy, I'll work with you on this. I'll ask Devin to reach out to the employees and see if there are a couple of particularly interested employees who would like to be part of the discussion and I'll leave it open. We can have another council member come on board. You guys can think about it a little bit and let me know who's interested. That sound satisfactory?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay, so then let's, uh, put this one down as no action taken and we'll move to possible approval to purchase asphalt crack machine and supplies. Do we need to hear from, uh, John on this?
I, I believe I was the one that was holding that up and, um, I think it's a good idea. As opposed to renting all the time.
Is John on board? Is he with us?
I do have a question. I thought it would, I thought we, um, I thought it was voted against last time.
It pa, it, um, failed a vote of three to one. It takes four council members to spend money. So it would take four council members to decide to spend the money.
Yeah, so I'm wondering why we're doing it again?
We were missing two council members and so I wanted to give everybody a chance to weigh in. But, um, it sounds like Councilman Powell's had some thoughts on the matter, so. If you have a motion you want to do, Chris, I can recognize you or how would you guys like?
Uh, let's go here with, um, do, do you? Possible approval of the asphalt crack machine and supplies? Um, oh, that's the wrong paper. I moved that. I don't have in front of me, James, the amount. So.
Um, three thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, Chris.
Uh, not to exceed two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars?
Two hundred and eighteen, yes.
Eighteen dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is that close to a motion?
I think it's three thousand. Did you say two or three?
Two.
I think it's three.
It is three.
It's three thousand.
You had to work a little extra to get an extra thousand. Three thousand, two hundred and eighteen.
Last second.
Okay. Yeah, moved by Powell, seconded by Grass, authorized payment not to exceed three thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars for the purchase of an asphalt crack machine and supplies. Does that represent your motion fairly?
It does. Very good. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Yeah, is John on board there?
I've unmuted, John.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, John. Uh, what is this, this machine you want? What are the? But, uh, is it a time saver, a better deal, or I guess, I don't know anything about it?
Well, as opposed to renting one and waiting for them to get ahold of us at some period during a twelve months, we would have our own piece of equipment and I could just order the blocks of tar. And like you seen up at city hall, we could crack seal at various times when, you know, extra, extra time warranted to go out and, uh, do that. And I, I'm hoping that it preserves the streets by keeping the moisture out from buckling and alligatoring where the cracks do form. Is, is the logic behind it from the stuff that I've read.
Okay, you, you answered it with your first statement, John, and we don't have that equipment and that way make it available if we had it on hand. That's, that's what I needed to know. Okay, that's all.
Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'll call the roll. Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cutrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. That will move us to discussion regarding employees' use of leave time or layoff due to COVID nineteen. So let me give council an update and I hope everybody's had an opportunity to read the email from the city's labor attorney. Congress passed, um, a new kind of leave that the city can get fully reimbursed for, a COVID nineteen leave. Uh, it's reimbursed through a payroll tax credit. However, only eighty hours per employee are available. So I've kept employees here at the city on essential services, um, and we've used the COVID leave to, um, make up and allow everybody to continue to collect pay on the basis that the city will get fully reimbursed through the payroll credit process. But with that running out, I believe it's time to take to council how we want to handle the, uh, employees during the rest of the shutdown. We have options, a lot of local governments and schools are continuing to pay their employees and call them in on, on as needed basis. Um, there is another option, we could designate non-essential employees and lay them off. They'll go out and collect unemployment. The city is what's called a reimbursing employer, so laying our employees off traditionally means that we will pay whatever they get in unemployment back to the Michigan Unemployment Insurance Agency. We don't know for certain that that's the case. There's some federal aid that is helping to cover those costs and they're promising to insulate employers, but we don't have a clear answer if the money for unemployment will come out of the city's pocket in the end or not. It could be that we can have the employees on call and continue to pay them and have it cost us about what it would just to lay them off. But there's a lot of unknowns in this and this being about spending money, I thought it was time to put this in front of the council for a discussion of how you guys would like to handle this. Um, if you've had a chance to review the advice from the city attorney, you know everything that I do and he is available by cell phone. If you guys need to talk to him, I can get him on the phone so that you can ask additional questions. With that, I'll open up the floor for questions and discussion.
I thought the government was gonna, uh, make sure that these people didn't get harmed with this virus. Uh, I guess my question is, are we, uh, know exactly how that's going to come down? I know we don't know exactly, but do we know how that's coming down to where? I do not want an employee hurt and lose money, not because of this stuff, so that's where I'm at. My decision would be, you know, on the side of the people within reason.
Unless there's some.
Yeah.
Unless there's some.
I agree with you there, Terry. I agree with you there. Um, I think John would be, he would have a better insight as far as how many we would need to have on as essential and lay somebody off for one week, bring them back and the other guy get a week. You know, I, I don't know who would have a better answer for that.
I, I think your DPW guys are pretty much gonna have to be here and I don't know, I can't answer that. John could, but DPW is, is still gonna run and you're still got water, sewer and, and stuff you have to take care of. Uh, the ones I was more, more important about is the gals in the office there. You, you, I don't know. I think we gotta have them too, but. I'll go wherever that, uh, you know, they're not hurt and that we don't hurt the city either. I mean, we gotta look out for the city too as much as possible.
I, I, I don't see why we don't just keep paying them. I mean, just, uh, unless there's some logical reason not to, I would just keep them right on staff. Ain't nobody getting through to unemployment anyway. I mean, personally, I had a friend who got laid off and made two hu, literally two hundred phone calls in one day and cannot get through, so.
You got, you gotta get into unemployment either around midnight or in the wee hours of morning. They got it set up where you can. That's where my grandson had to do. He got on it just before midnight, I think.
Yeah, well, that's, that's still the point is it's, it's a real hassle and I, I don't know, I, I don't want, unless there's, unless it's absolutely emergent necessarily to lay them off. I've, unless there's some other logical reason to do it because it benefits them, then I would say keep them all on staff.
I have no problem.
They've all been pitching in. We've had a rotating schedule in order to provide safety and, uh, social distancing while they're in here working and all of them have been, uh, part of that process and part of that schedule to take care of essential things.
Yeah, they don't have to be in there. They're not in there. They're normal.
Answered, phone calls are getting responded. And, uh, as you'll have seen from the advice from the labor attorney, if we ask, uh, department heads because they're salaried to do any work, then we pay them their salary. It's not a, it, it's either you lay the department head off and you lose that entire ser, and in my opinion, all the department heads are part of essential services or, um, i- if they're gonna be on, then we pay them.
Yeah, I don't know. You just don't pay all of them. I mean, that's, unless there's something I'm not seeing, that's what I would be in favor of.
I would agree. Continue to, uh, to pay them.
I think for the time being, we keep them right in there, keep paying them right now.
Well, and then, but we pay, the city pays unen, uh, unemployment insurance, correct? They put in towards that?
But it's reimbursed.
But we pay them back.
Okay, so we don't, because as a municipality, uh, we're not what we're called, we're not called a contributing employer. A contributing employer pays a tax every quarter to provide the insurance. We pay nothing when we have no layoffs. As a reimbursing employer, what the practice has been is to bill us for any unemployment claims against the city. We don't know that the government's going to insulate us against that. If we lay anybody off, it's possible we'll end up repaying all the unemployment benefits out of our budget.
We gotta pay them anyway, keep them there. At least we can call them in when we need them or whatever we need to do.
Yeah, I, I, you need a motion for that?
Uh, that would be helpful because, uh, this is about spending money and so I'm recognizing the limits of my authority to keep going. So a motion to maintain.
I don't know in a special, James, if we, if we can approve a dollar amount that wasn't on the agenda. It's just a discussion.
Well, I would, I thought, what if council wants to make a motion to authorize the mayor to keep, to keep the staff in place?
Fair enough. Sorry, I just heard, I heard money.
Uh, I make a motion that, uh, for the time being, we keep all city staff in place and, and authorize the mayor to continue to pay salaries and staff as currently appointed.
Second.
Moved by Grass, seconded by, was that Cutrell?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, that we keep the staff in place for the time being and continue to pay salaries. Okay, that we keep the staff in place for the time being and continue to pay salaries. Is there any discussion? I'll call the roll. Councilman Powell.
Yes.
Councilman Wood.
Oh, yeah.
Councilwoman Cottrell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbavy.
Yes.
Councilman Grass.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. That will take us on to the next item of business, which is possible approval of gravel materials. John, do you want to talk to us about this?
Yes. So you'll see, uh, we have gravel materials and street grading and there, it's a, it's a package deal because I had to have two contractors, one to haul the material to the gravel streets and the other to, uh, grade it out and compact it. Um, so, uh, one is, uh, prefit excavating or perfect excavating for the grading of five thousand nine hundred and twenty and um, the gravel, uh, approximately a thousand yards of road gravel, uh, for eleven thousand eight hundred from, uh, Osinasek Trucking. And I do have a list of the streets. Um, we have quite a bit or quite a few streets. Um, doing approximately nine blocks in, in the city. Not, not every single gravel area will be done, but the ones that, um, it ranges anywhere from six, seven years ago, we did some to roughly fifteen, maybe twenty, since some of them have had any material applied.
Orchard Street.
I have Orchard from Lincoln to Watkins, uh, South Washington, uh, south of First Street, uh, Watkins Street, uh, South Watkins from Third to Second, and then, uh, Lamb Street to Britton Road, Green Street to Britton Road, uh, Meadowdale Court, Valley Lane and Valley Court at this time. So it's, uh, roughly a three-day project is what, um, what I'm looking at.
Hey, John, you have, you've had those in the budget, correct? Something you planned?
Yes, I have, there's money in, uh, Highway Local for this. Um, you know, I was considering doing it. Um, we're looking at some, uh, a paving grant possibly. So that's gonna kind of put a, for other things, um, we may have to hold off on some of the paving, um, projects until after July, like moving it to next, the next budget, but there's enough in there to do.
Uh, do you need two separate motions on this or just one? Uh, Devin?
Um, I separated the two motions, uh, because one has a, is asking John to sign the proposal. So yes, if you could do both separately, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we approve, uh, the, uh, gravel material, not ticks. Is this the, is this the five nine two O cost for that?
The first one is the gravel and the second one is the actual excavating of the gravel.
Okay, so, so eleven thousand for the gravel, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, gravel, uh, for, uh, for the DPW and an amount not to exceed eleven thousand eight hundred dollars.
And I reinforced the. Two. Like it. Field gotten rusty.
Was there a second?
Yes.
That.
Move by Grass, seconded by Powell, that we approved the purchase of gravel from Osinasek Inc. at a cost not to exceed eleven thousand eight hundred. Does that fairly represent your motion?
Yes.
Is there discussion?
I have one question. Um, the estimate date is over thirty days. Is it gonna be a problem?
Um, well, I don't believe so. If it is, I'll have to bring it back. Um, with everybody being off, I can't see that it's, you know, I'll just have, uh, Osinasek freshen it up.
Okay.
I, I do apologize for that.
Well, it's not your fault. It should have happened before this, right?
This dating, yeah.
Is there other discussion?
Just call me tomorrow sometime.
Not hearing any. Councilman Wood.
Twelve one two, whatever.
Councilman Wood.
Yeah.
Your vote on the motion?
Didn't say yes.
Oh, that was a yes? Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Cottrell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbavy.
Yeah.
Councilman Grass.
Yes.
Councilman Powell. I got a thumbs up from Chris. Uh, for some reason Devin, Chris is muted.
Yeah, I don't know how that's happening, but I, I will take care of it.
Thank you.
Fell asleep.
So the motion passes five to zero. Um, council's, uh, decision on the grading proposal.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the grading of the streets, uh, but for a cost not to exceed five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Is there a second on the motion?
Yes, I seconded.
Is that Cottrell?
Yes, it is.
Move by Grass, seconded by Cottrell, that we authorize the grading proposal from prefit excavating for an amount not to exceed five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Does that fairly represent your motion?
Yes. Yes.
Is there discussion? Hearing none, Councilwoman Cottrell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. That will move us on to our last item of business is the possible approval of piping repair to water treatment plant. John, do you want to talk to us about this one?
Yeah, this is inside the building above ground. Uh, it's, uh, some of the Schedule eighty, um, on the, uh, effluent side of the vessels, there's, uh, some of the glue joints have started to give way again on a different section. So, um, some of this, you know, I, I'm hoping that after we get everything that is under pressure all the time replaced, uh, we'll be able to go another, uh, you know, five to eight years. Uh, the plant's been in operation now since, uh, oh nine, I believe. So, um, most of this is, it's just the nature of, uh, glue joints.
I move that, uh, we approve the, uh, repair of piping to the water treatment plant for a cost not to exceed one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
Move by Grass, seconded by Galbavy to accept the proposal from T H Eifert for an amount not to exceed twelve hundred and sixty dollars to repair well plant piping and authorize superintendent of DPW to sign the proposal. Does that fairly represent your motion?
Yes.
Very good. Is there discussion? Hearing none? Councilwoman Galbavy?
Yes.
Mindy, are you still here?
Yes, I, yes.
You vote yes?
Yes, I vote yes.
Thank you. Councilman Grass?
Yes.
Councilman Powell?
Yes.
Councilman Wood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cottrell?
Yes.
I have the vote as five to zero in favor. That concludes all of our business. Uh, over the last couple of weeks, I have, uh, begun doing small videos to talk about what's going on at the city. Those are being posted at Studio one thirty and they're also being posted at, um, at the city's, uh, Facebook site. I intend to keep doing that till we get to the end of the crisis. Also, I want to advise council that as we get into May, we're gonna get into crunch time on the city budget. I do intend to call special meetings so council has an opportunity to watch, watch the process. Um, we'll try to set them up in this fashion, uh, in order for everybody to keep safe, make it available for you to participate. But if, uh, the governor releases us from our stay home, stay safe order, then, uh, we will be able to gather down in the council chambers or you'll be able to participate this way in order to, uh, have an opportunity to watch the budget process. But we're gonna get under crunch time pretty quick. So I wanted to let you guys know that's coming up. With that, we're at the end of the meeting and I had promised to offer a second opportunity for public comment. So would anyone from the public like to be recognized to speak to city council?
Dave is acknowledging it.
Dave?
Hello?
Hello, Dave. You're recognized.
Thank you. Um, I had sent, um, earlier, uh, I had sent a proposal to, uh, Mayor Huglitt and to the council members that I had confined email addresses for about a recycling project that we have going here in Langsberg. Um, have any of you had a chance to look at that?
I have.
Um, I was hoping that we could possibly discuss it, but I, I fully understand because we, we, we've been, uh, contacting all of the townships and the county of Clint, counties of Clinton and Shawasi, and this is the world's worst time, uh, to be, um, presenting a proposal, asking for money. Uh, however, we are caught in the dilemma of the fact that the grant application that we're working on to the state of Michigan, the deadline is May the twenty eighth, which is two weeks from last night. So, um, we're going against the grain and, um, uh, trying to put this forward. Um, just in a nutshell, um, the recycling group, the recycling effort has been a drop-off site here in Langsberg. It's been in operation for all over thirty years. It's been, uh, run by volunteers and it's, uh, been funded by donations made by the folks that are dropping off their materials. So it's been self-funded for all this time. However, we've not had a permanent site and we've been, been bumped around to different locations multiple times and the, the current location, the city of Langsberg has designated for other purposes, which forced us to go to the community to try to, um, uh, establish this project uh, to, that would produce a permanent drop-off site. The, the Langsberg schools have agreed to allow us to build a forty by sixty foot building next to their maintenance barn. The city of Langsberg has agreed to serve as the fiduciary agent for the project. Um, current, um, well, as I mentioned, uh, the, the goal is to, to build a forty by sixty foot pole barn that people could drive through, drop off the materials, materials can be stored until there's enough that's gathered to have a vendor come and pick them up. Um, and, um, and it would be permanent. It would be, um, uh, and it would allow us to in, be open more often. Uh, it would allow us to, uh, increase our volume significantly. Um, and that's what, that's kind of a nutshell of, of what we're asking for, what we're trying to do. At this point, the Waste Solid Waste Committee, uh, in Clinton County uh, unanimously approved a five thousand dollar, oh, excuse me. The, the grant that we're submitting, we're, we're currently, uh, at about a hundred thousand dollars is what the grant will be.
David, I got you at your three-minute time. Um, can you tell us specifically what you're asking them to approve?
Yes.
Uh, and, and then?
Um, um, we're asking the townships around Langsberg and the city of Perry, if you would commit two thousand dollars toward our twenty thousand dollar match that we have to come up with uh, for the hundred thousand dollar grant. And then, uh, starting next year, a two thousand dollar, um, contribution toward our annual operating expenses. That's the specific task.
Okay, thank you. Um, so that reaches the time limit on that public comment. Would anyone else from the public like to be recognized at this time? Anybody else asking for recognition, Devin?
I do not see any hands up.
Okay, so that will close out our public comment session. Um,
Mayor.
Council member, yes.
This is Terry. Uh, we can't approve any money on that, uh, thing in Langsberg anyway, because it has to be on the agenda, doesn't it?
It does. If you want to act on this, um, a special meeting can be called and done by Zoom. Um, along those lines, if any council member asks me for a special meeting um, on actually any important business that comes up, I'll go ahead and call it. You can call it before the next regular meeting, which is scheduled for, um, let me get the calendar up here. Scheduled for May seventh. Or any two council members have the authority to call a special meeting as well. So now you guys have a clear understanding of what, uh, Dave is asking for and you'll have a chance to think about it and we can call a special if you want to do something.
Sounds good.
Okay. So is there, um, anything else from council tonight? Thank you, everybody. Welcome to this brand new world. Yeah, I gotta say, I like sitting in a room with you guys personally. I can hear you a lot better. I think that works a lot better. But I think this meeting went all right and I appreciate everybody's time and effort that it took to get here. And appreciate all the members of the public who took the time to come and, uh, share their comments and observe this process.
Mayor.
Yes.
Dave is raising his hand again.
Um, I'm sorry, Dave. I've, I've already given you your three minutes that went a little bit over and if I start handing out well over three minutes, I'll have to give every, we won't be able to enforce the council's rule anymore. You want to give me a call about any new information? You have my phone number and you're welcome to do so. I'll gladly answer your call. Thank you very much.
Tell him we'll discuss it.
Yep, so you can call Councilman Wood too, if you'd like. Very good.
Stop by his house. Hey.
Bring, bring some good coffee. They, they make pretty good coffee up at our seven eleven, so bring him a cup. Don't breathe on him. We want to keep Mr. Wood healthy.
Set on the railing. I'll come on, get it after you leave.
All right. So with that, the time is now eight oh nine and we've concluded our business. So I will, uh, close this session of the Perry City Council. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good seeing everybody.
Everybody, please.
Bye, everybody. Be safe. Six feet.